One nation, under God. In Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. You can do the roll call, starting with Mr. Hill.
Here.
Holly Muddrum here.
Brian's here.
Here.
John Kirkles here.
Jessie's here.
Dawn Hoser here.
Okay. Do we have any comments from visitors? If you want to come forward. Yes. And if you want to say your name, so we have it. I was gonna say, for the record, I'm not in court.
So this is my first meeting, so. My name's Brett Scadham, for those of you who don't know me. And I just wanted to come in and talk about some of the iPad usage that the elementary kids are being allowed to use, I guess. And I have some footnotes here, but I guess the biggest concern is, is just kind of the overall freedom of which they have at such a young age, being, you know, third grade. Seeing, I guess, my oldest son go from second to third grade, and that freedom is, you know, with being able to bring it home, and then just like the web access in general, that they're, you know, able to go on YouTube, which I think they've blocked YouTube, but now, from my understanding, is that they've unblocked it. And I don't know if that's true or not, but Ben, my son, was just talking about using YouTube again. And YouTube's not really a thing that, that we allow our kids to use at home, and, you know, to see them, you know, access these different sites, and a couple of the other sites are, like, it's called Bitlife site, which is a seventeen-plus app that... The point of the app is you start life from birth, and then you progress through life, almost like The Sims. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with The Sims, but you progress through life, and your, you know, different decisions are being made. Well, here, some of the decisions involved drug dealing in the app, so that was a concern. And like I said, it's a seventeen-plus app on the App Store.
Could you say the name of it again, sir, for that?
Uh, Bitlife.
Bitlife?
Yeah, and I believe it's called B-I-T-L-Y-F-E. And that just came from one kid, you know, saying, hey, during their free time, check out this website. Well, then it spread like wildfire throughout the grade, and everybody's, you know, on the site. So that was a big concern. You know, and we have a few screenshots of like some of the homepage YouTube, you know, with the thumbnails, the video thumbnails, and like, you know, one of them is like a kid holding up a middle finger, and, you know. So I just think the overall, I don't know if it would be firewall or network protection, you know, at the school, and I don't know if there's a way to implement that too, to where when they bring it home, you know, there's, there's monitoring as well that can happen, because, you know, they're assigned iXL or whatnot at home. And then, you know, it's like, here's your iPad, do your work, but then they might get sidetracked, and, you know, obviously, it falls into our lap as well, as a parent. But at the same time, like, we don't, we don't, we don't even have a home iPad for them to use. We don't have, they don't have a cellphone, they don't have, you know, free range of a computer, nothing like that. Like, it's all very closely monitored, so. And then, you know, some of the social media aspects of some of the apps that they're using with, I think it's called Slides app, and, you know, other kids can comment on other kids' work, and, you know, it's, a lot of it's very uplifting. But then there are some comments that are inappropriate, and I have some examples, but, you know, either way, it's just that whole social media, I post something, somebody makes a comment, you know, and it can be in a negative effect, and it's just, it doesn't, it's not very uplifting. Yeah, so I think just my, my overall, I just feel like there should be more regulation on iPad usage, especially for elementary kids. So I know you guys can't really comment, but that's what I'd like to, to see happen is just, I guess, more of, more policy change. And I know it's a new thing, that, you know, this is very new, and with anything that's new, you know, things become dynamic, and they're moving fast, and I just, you know, I think there could be some changes to be made, so.
I do have a question, because it's been a long time since I hit a third grader.
Yeah.
So they are getting iXL as their homework versus like taking home some of their other stuff and utilizing the iXL in school, when there would be more of our firewalls to protect them?
Yeah, so they're, they're required, from my understanding, is a certain completion percentage of iXL. And, you know, it's not meant, I don't think it's meant to be go home and do it, but if you can do ten, fifteen minutes at home. And to be honest, I just, we just don't even really want them to do any at home. So, and then there's the whole TV busters, you know, no screen time, but then it's like, well, how much, how much screen time do you have at school on your iPad? You know, what's the point of you not watching TV before bed if you've been on your screen the whole time at school, or for a couple hours at school? And I do think there's a lot of positives in the use of iPads, and, you know, just like when I was in school, and we were introduced to Microsoft Word, and learned Times New Roman, twelve-point font, you know, and pages, that was, you know, catching up with the times, and we have to continue to do so. But I think we also, I also remember going to the media center and not being able to access hardly any website, you know, beyond maybe like Wikipedia or encyclopedia website, so. It would just be nice to see more regulation, especially for the, for the younger kids.
I think that that's, thank you for bringing it forward. I was aware of some things previously, but I thought that the firewall stuff had gotten worked out. I think if you're willing to share your contact information with Mr. Stifter. And I also think that it would be really important to have somebody, maybe Mr. Roos, appear here at the next board meeting, to be able to talk about that a little bit more, and maybe even add him to the orientation program, both at Rippleside and at the high school, so parents are aware and know what to expect. Because if there are, if there are different protections in our building versus ours, parents need to know that ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Cindy, I know there's some things to, just to have a hobby, but Jason's talked about a kind of a parent control jam that we, we have, like, a feature with, I don't know, the purchases or whatever, but it's a, it's a parent, or parental control type software that, that they can have on their iPads.
Okay.
So I don't know enough about it to speak detail about it, but I know that that is something that parents have access to. And I think Jason's done some presentations, whether it's at Rippleside or Hendrickson's offices or whatever, but I think that there's that feature available, so that, you know, parents can constrict some of the access, which may be a place to start, but I think that, you know, between Mr. Stifter and myself, we can get some more information, and we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, I think so, there's some room to grow there.
Yep.
Okay.
But I'll contact him.
Okay. Yeah. Right, sounds good. All that is all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Any other comments from visitors? Last chance, any others? Okay. Roland, were you gonna say something?
Isn't there just a lot of, you know, I'm kinda dumb sometimes and stuff, but isn't there just a constant?
Open the door, shut the door, open the door, shut the door.
Yeah, I mean, isn't there a constant try from everybody else? I mean, these, it's trying to get in and bust in, right?
Yeah.
It's constantly doing it, and it's just, you know, it's troublesome, I mean, I get it, Brett. It's troublesome as heck, 'cause, you know, how to keep that away? It's just, it's, it's really trying to stay ahead of it, but you can't always do it. It's like viruses, right? I mean, it's like, they're constantly coming at you, and it's just, it's unfortunate the world is like this, frustrating.
I know I'm done, but it is, it's, it's a, it's just a constant battle. And we thought we were, you know, safe with like the kids' YouTube, 'cause there's a kids' version of YouTube.
Yeah.
For like the really little kids, and it's even some of that stuff, it's, you know, granted, I know it's violence or swear words, but it's still this, you know, it's just not like an appropriate thing.
Kinda like in cartoons or those, there's that underlying adult content that's still there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, approval of the agenda, are there any revisions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make them all. I'll second.
I didn't hear who the first one was.
Dawn.
Oh, Dawn makes the motion to approve the agenda. Holly seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, student council reps?
I don't know if we have any reps, but Sammy did send me the presentation with middle school. She, she was out today with a sick child. That's not yet, unfortunately.
You want me to do it, or you got it?
I think I got it, it's my computer will stay while I do it. I just gotta find the...
Cindy and I like this.
I know, we're like, yay!
Yeah!
Some of the things for middle school student council, she's here. There's a picture here of the middle school student council. They had tonight, a group of students represents a lot of areas. Some of the things they've done, Thanksgiving trivia about staff, they'd staff questions, trivia questions about staff, and they put them up in the media, or in the, uh, got it?
That's just what we're talking about.
Yeah, find their way in.
Yeah.
I am one of the people slated to get a new computer. Mine just go black screen every once in a while. But if it goes out again, then you're just gonna have to listen to me read through it. There is a, it is on the board book if you're on your computer.
I love the grateful wall.
Anyway, so they've done a coloring contest throughout the year, the grateful gobbler's wall. Students wrote a note, "I'm grateful for." They had that posted down by the auditorium and comments area. Students had a lot of different things they were grateful for. Just kind of getting students involved and taking a look at what they have, and things to be thankful for around that. Thanksgiving time, December, middle school did a student break, a holiday break, did a dress-up days. They went and read the kindergarteners, they had a Christmas stocking, goody giveaway. They had student council hot cocoa party and a gift exchange. It's a picture of them there at the hot cocoa gathering. Here's some photos of some of the activities they did throughout December. Both of it's kindergarten reading, going over and working with the younger kids. February, they had a variety of Valentine's Day games and activities for grades, really for grade seven through twelve. They're set up every day down the lunchroom for the week, and not only did they get the junior high kids, seventh, eighth graders involved, but they worked to get the senior high involved. To be honest, they would all tell you it was harder to get senior high involved than it was to get their junior high kids involved, but they stayed after it, and, yeah, got some things done. March, the middle school dance. It's their winter formal, had about a hundred students show up at that. Held it right there in the comments area cafeteria. And there we lost it again.
Bobby's gonna shut that video off, Dan. That's what keeps getting you out.
No, I think it's better to use the HTML, but down the other.
Oh, sure, yeah. Right. Trying to be on Wi-Fi, it just kills as well.
More thankful for you, Javier.
Yes.
All right. You guys almost got out of my presentation, because we kept working like this, and we're not doing it today. Bobby to the rescue. So we got some pictures from the dance that they held, made in a future appreciation, and obviously, some of the things, signs of the different student councils they did. They raised some funds, kids put money into a bucket, and they had three different teachers who earned the most money, got to, they agreed that if they were top money gainers, they would let kids, three kids, I think, from each homeroom, or a couple kids from each homeroom, dump water on them. And it was Ms. Forberg, Mr. Hendrickson, and Mr. Smith, who were the top money earners, and they, for their efforts, they got water dumped on, and they raised over a hundred bucks for the different things, different activities they do. And they basically will be wrapping up their final meetings at the end of the school year celebration. They'll be helping with the sixth grade visiting the high school. I think that's this week. Tomorrow? Tomorrow, so they do a tour, and what a better way for sixth graders to learn the ins and outs, and to learn from another seventh grader who just, or junior high kids who've recently gone through it themselves, so. Our middle school student council, I wish Sammy could have been here, or, because they really did a nice job of different things, really. In some cases, running their own activities, in other cases, just supporting what was going on with the high school, and maybe tweaking it a little bit to make it fit better for the junior high, seventh and eighth grade students, so. Nice job of their student council for the work they did. So, that's that.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, Cindy, you might just, let me just get here.
Oh, all right. Okay, next, that is Aiken enrollment projection.
Yeah, I don't think there is any other student council stuff.
I don't think so.
All right, so I'm gonna, I got a lot of stuff on the slide here, on these slides, I'm not gonna read through them all. Working with ICS, Jeff Schultz, myself, and John Powers, who does a lot, John does a lot of data, and looks at a lot of data, and helped us put together a, a presentation. And I just wanna go through a few things in this, and part of what we're doing, moving forward ties to several of our strategic plan goals. It's increased community and business partnerships. We're gonna implement, communicate strategic and facilities plans, and support the district priorities, and identify the needs of our district. We're promoting the positives of ISD-1 on a regular basis. We're gonna address the safety and facility needs and upgrades, and promote financial stability. And we're gonna create a plan for the future of Aiken public schools. And that's what we embark on with our listening sessions, and then later in the meeting, I'll talk a little bit about that. I know a lot of you wanna get to a concert, so I'm gonna maybe go through this a little faster than I should, but you have all the information in the board book. Just a quick overview of what we saw in some of the enrollment, data that was studied, and population trends. Our population in our county is declining, not, not, you know, not just student age population, but our overall population. And I've shared this with you before, that Aiken County is the oldest county in Minnesota, the average age of fifty-six point two years old. And our, you know, we talked about our population growth as you read through their different areas, but our population is going down. Our student population pool is down twelve point one percent over the last ten, in the, over the last ten years. We're kinda stabilizing now, and I had some charts and some information I'll show you later. That show how, you know, our elementary, with you a couple years ago, we had to make reductions there, and everybody was wondering why, just the elementary, not the high school? Well, that's where the lower class sizes were, and now as those move up through the buildings and into the high school, we're doing some of the same, well, not same, but similar reductions in the next couple of years. John, and John Powers and Jeff Schultz did a previous study on Aiken and enrollment, and basically, not to even see the chart, but they projected that in 2023, 24, we'd have nine hundred and eighty-six students. We currently have nine hundred and seventy. So they're off a little bit. Quite honestly, we would have, the change that threw off some of their numbers was the increase in homeschooling. Nobody anticipated the homeschool trend would grow like it did ten years ago. Again, our, a, a projection of students' numbers, the values are closely to the work they did. Our numbers did go down, some of that, fewer students, and some of it is homeschooling and so on. But again, that's just showing the projections made in 2015, right about here, the numbers come almost together, so. Showing that the work, the work that, projections that were done ten years ago weren't far off. So factors to be considered, student enrollment changes within the district. They looked at trends in other districts and neighboring districts, they looked at, we looked at some initiatives. And then John did a real, did a dig into births and relative, compares our kindergarten enrollment and so on. Students living in Aiken have three options for schooling. They can come to our district, they can enroll to another district, or they can homeschool. Again, one that's really changed here for our district are a number of homeschools, and we'll see some more on that in a little bit. Lot of numbers in the chart here, but I wanted to just show, we talked, you know, 2014, right here, we had eighty-eight point nine percent of our own students were enrolled in Aiken. That number's dropped to eighty-one point three percent, almost equivalent to the percentage change in open enrollment. That change about six percent. Number of our students that were enrolling dropped about seven percent. So again, that's drawing where they went, or what happened, why did it drop? It's, it's the homeschool, numbers have increased. Here are the projections along the way, how their projected numbers have decreased, and as you look at these charts, you'll see that the higher numbers of larger classes were in the high school, and as those graduate out, starting after next year, actually, the high school classes will start, grade levels will start getting smaller, to mimic or to follow the same six-year pattern that our elementary following. And examining the average grade size by grade reveals a certain trend in enrollment. And the trend I mentioned is involves two lower grade groups that experience continuous declines. If we look, look here, in the average students per grade in twenty-four, for kindergarten through fourth, third grade was eighty-four. The same years, the same kindergarten through third grade now averages sixty-three, so there's a twenty, you know, average of twenty kids a grade level drop there. We can do the same thing for the grade band four through six. In 2014, that was a hundred kids averaging a grade, this is twenty-three, twenty-four, it's sixty-nine. So it just shows all that, and you can really follow this, again, if you were, you pull it up, you can follow those trends. You know, every three years, this number kinda falls into place here, you know, and along the way. Open enrollment, open enrollment's an interesting one. We've been just a few below or a few above, we're as much as nineteen, I think, above. They're projecting, you know, and our Minnesota MDE hasn't put out the final numbers yet. John's projecting that are actually our open enrollment numbers, we're gonna be behind a couple from where we were. And I'll get to that chart. And this is just the options for kids, and the arrows, the size of the arrows, kinda represent where we have more kids going to or coming from. Obviously, a lot of swapping and exchanging with Crosby and Crosby, and it's, you know, we have students going there, we have more, some more students coming back, but we also, the area of schools, we have students going or coming in open enrollment. And here's the twenty-three, the enrollment in, enrollment out numbers for schools. We are, he's projecting, last year we were a plus sixteen in open enrollment. This year, he's projecting a negative three. Never really got a chance to chat with him specifically about that, why he received a big, well, it'll be interesting to see when we get our actual MDE numbers, what that comes out to be. And here's what I've been talking about, here's our homeschool numbers. You know, we, we, up and down around that forty, then we bumped to sixty, dropped back down, and now we're right at ninety, it's ninety-nine homeschool students this year. We're about two and a half, two and a half times up. I don't expect you to be able to see that, there are a couple of things here that I wanna share on the comments. You know, all about two districts saw an increase in number of homeschooled students. And for the group, the percent of homeschoolers from three point one to five point six. Crosby was the highest at twelve point four percent homeschool. Right here, this red line is our number, again, you can see the, we trended up there the last couple of years. This, but, you know, don't worry about the chart, rate declined eight point three percent. And here's just kind of the trend lines of, of the, of the district, so. This is our K-12 enrollment over, over the past ten years. Again, you can see us dropping down, all these districts had declining enrollment. On Amia Hill City, we did Crosby, Isle, Northland, and McGregor. Over the last several years, Northland and Isle had moderate increase in enrollment. McGregor's been fairly stable. The chart shows the number of resident students living within the district, so whether, regardless of where they go to school. So you can see here, this red line again is Aiken. We're just up twelve hundred, or what, over twelve hundred back in 2014, fifteen. Now we're, we've dropped down to under eleven hundred in 22, 23. These are, there's just less students, there's fewer students in our district, regardless of where they go to school. There's less students living here, and you can see the other districts are, have dropped as well, although we're at the top of that list. The number of students living in the district, as I mentioned, have decreased from twelve, one thousand two hundred and twenty to a thousand seventy-two. Number of homeschoolers more than doubled, I've mentioned that. And our enrollment has declined, and, and, but the number of students have declined. If you remember, well, it might have been a previous, many of you being on the bar, we kept asking, why, why is our enrollment going down? Where are our kids going? And I'd say that we just, the kids aren't here, or we have fewer students, we have fewer school-aged kids. And that's what this, this data's showing us. Some of the projections, and here's what they used for that, they analyzed twenty, two thousand and twenty, twenty trends that they seen between those years. They do, there is some estimations and projections. The key factors, the number of families in the child raising, childbearing years, and, and then they look at fertility rates and so on. Aiken County has projected to continue to lose population through the year 2033. Just, with just the trend we're on, I mentioned the median age for county residents is fifty-six point two. All the other counties in the state, that's thirty-eight point five, or for Minnesota in general, it's thirty-eight point five. The county saw a moderate growth in children, number of children up until about two, 2010. In about 2010 to 2020, there was just a small level of increase, the, the increase got, got smaller. Couple of things on the area that we, that were pulled in. Generally, Aiken economy is doing well, no major developments expected, no significant losses. The Talons Metal Project is, is something that could potentially impact our district, the outlined areas of our district, but that's probably a few years away from having an impact. Riverview Hospital expansion is a major, is a major plus for us. With enhanced medical services, it creates another asset for bringing in residents. If you're aware, there's a couple of new housing opportunities, housing projects going on out by the hospital. Again, openings are areas where people live. The broadband service is increasing and getting better. We're a large county, a large area, a large district, so that takes some time. The county has a naturally better campaign going on, working to attract households. People are vacationer, encouraging them to stay and live in the county. And most new populations, we need to turn over existing homes, older households, and younger ones with families, so. We don't have, and we've talked about this, we don't have a lot of housing options in Aiken, so that makes it difficult for new families to come in and get established. With some of the housing that's being built, I think the belief or the goal is that some of our retirees or older residents maybe will be moving into those, that housing, which then could open up some households for, for families or for younger people to move into. A lot of things gotta fall into place there, Lori. Yeah, just, or projecting that in the county, the burst a year ago- Yeah, just, or projecting that in the county, the burst a year ago, based on past data and research, figure about a hundred and twenty kids will be born a year in the county. Not just our district, but in the county. That can vary, you know, again, depending on the year, but the, the thought is it'll be just either side of a hundred and twenty. And that's some of the assumptions used there, that there are no economic developments that we haven't seen. You know, new housing could provide a, could provide a change to that or an impact to that. But the average number of births, about a hundred and twenty, you're saying the projection, it could, could change by anywhere from ten to twenty-five, either side of that. Of those, about fifty-five percent of the births, believe would be living in the Aiken School District. Again, that number could fluctuate based on where people find housing, could be as few as forty-five percent or as much as seventy percent. And then with a lot of discussion about the open enrollment dynamics, and it remains similar in recent years with net gain. I, I want to believe that the open enrollment numbers will settle down and come back, maybe down toward that fifty or sixty a year. I don't know that. But as we talked about, they looked at trends of homeschool numbers over time. It seems like schools have seen a jump oftentimes over a period of a few years, that settles back into a similar pattern to what maybe they have done for the previous eight or ten years. And here, you know, again, I wish we could see that better, but projected enrollment, enrollment next year, nine forty-eight. And we're going to slowly slip down as those bigger classes graduate. And when we settle in, there's projections, right, you know, just looking at our numbers coming through, you know, ten years, we'll be at about eight fifty, eight fifty-six is what their projection is saying. Not a lot of change in those ten years from, in the elementary, we'll go from four fifty-eight to four sixty-four. Actually, you know, our projections are right, it'll go up a little bit. But when you look at seven to twelve, we're going to go from five hundred and twelve kids down to three ninety-two. So that dropping students that we've been seeing in our elementary is now going to be hit in the high school, and that'll be changing the dynamics there. This is just showing where they're projecting our enrollment in the future, we're right here, we're going to see a little bit of a decline, and then start to level out as we get closer to twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And then we'll kind of be at that sixty to sixty-five kids to a grade level. And again, these are projections, not a prediction. We did look at a map, we looked at stats and just say, oh, I predict that. Took some patterns and dynamics, and again, working, John had worked with the district, John Powers had worked with the district before, and his numbers were fairly accurate, what actually happened, which I guess really impressed me. But we can use these projections a number of ways, a number of ways to compare enrollment with projected ones, identify reasons why people may be coming or going, or why we may see a drop here or there, why number might be different there. And then we can use, proactively take changes to intentionally change one of our assumptions used. For example, open enrollment out, you know, is there something we can do to try and capture some of, some of our open enrollment kids out? The number of ways we can use this data, which gives us a more in-depth search. So some of the highlights, our projection continues, highlights, I, I, no, this is a highlight.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Because I saw that, good a highlight, when I read it, it's like, no, it's not really a highlight. Projection continues, our enrollment continues to decline. And about twenty-seven, twenty-eight will start leveling off. Eleven, twenty-eight percent decline in enrollment from nine seventy to eight hundred and fifty-six kids. Our K-six enrollment, as I mentioned, is going to stay pretty stable. But they've, they've faced the decline in enrollment, and those numbers will move to the high school. And that's the next point, is our, our high school enrollment is going to decline by twenty-three point four percent over the next ten years. As the larger class sizes graduate and are replaced by those smaller class sizes. And then the resident student numbers will decline. We're, you know, the non-resident counts rise about ten point one percent, they become a bigger part of our population. And they're projecting that the average K-three grade sizes will be in the low to mid-sixties. Other grade groups will eventually hit this level as the larger classes exit and graduate, so. Now, I know I ran through that and you couldn't really see a lot on that screen. It isn't your board book presentation, I wanted to share with you some of the data that we've been pulling together as we work through the listening sessions and some of the things going on behind, behind the listening session scenes, so. And here's just on the very last page of that, and again, you can take a look at this, but some of other districts and things they've worked with in doing some of the same work. So a couple of phone conversations with John Powers, and, and the guy knows a lot of, has a lot of data on population in, in our, in our school district and our areas, so. Questions?
I have a couple of questions as you were going through, I'm jotting them down. When we think about homes, children who are being homeschooled, I am curious to know how our number of homeschool students compares to the state and compares to the national average. And you probably don't have those numbers right now.
I don't think I do.
But, but at some point, I'd like to see those numbers, because I think that that's important. And it, it allows us to look at that number through a little bit different lens to realize that we, we probably are not unique to the nation. My second question is also about homeschooling. I think it's important to be curious. In any industry, if people are leaving, and if your consumers are leaving, you have questions that you ask. One of them is, why are they leaving? Why is there this trend? Because I know this trend is not just unique to Aiken, it is a national trend. But I think that it is important for us in Aiken to be asking why? And be able to respond to that why? Because that's a significant number of students. When you, when you, when you calculate the number of students versus the percentage, that, that looks different. And so I'm curious about that.
I can answer that in one slide, talk about area districts. All but two districts in the immediate area saw an increase in the number of homeschool students. Crosby jumped twelve point four percent. And I thought I had the, I have the data right here.
One of the questions that I think about too is if we were to survey or to ask that question that Doc proposes, what do families anticipate going forward? Because as we move forward with both of our facilities and our staffing, we want to make sure that we have sufficient space and resources and the right people and facilities in place. So if people just plan on homeschooling their children till, you know, fifth grade, for instance, we're going to need to know that because then we, we don't, we wouldn't necessarily want to be making reductions, right? So the fact that they're homeschooling today, how long do they intend on doing that? And is there any opportunity where they might anticipate coming back into our schools? Because we want to make sure that there's a seat available in the event that that happens.
Yeah, I think there's tremendous opportunity with the huge, hugely expanding trades areas and job markets. That's where the job growth is, that's where the industry is in training and producing, creating a product that you can't duplicate with homeschooling, you can't get that at home. And that's, Ron and I talked a lot about this, but that training, that development, those skills, you, you can't do that in a home environment, but we, we can create that. You know, and that's, you see the advancements in many districts now moving towards the career academy approaches, and that can't be duplicated in a homeschool environment.
College in the schools, classes.
College in the school cannot be duplicated.
Is there a point where, you know, we need to kind of anticipate that those numbers might be different? So we have adequate facilities and resources?
The one thing about our, our homeschool, they are kind of spread, there isn't, well, it's not like we have twenty kids for one grade, so if they all came back, they could overwhelm us. But, you know, they are somewhat consistently spread out over the, over the grades, particularly in the elementary. Oftentimes, kids will come back when they get to the high school level for some of the same reasons you mentioned, so.
I think you have to look at this also as a societal trend and look at it outside of school and as the work from home. Reese, you're seeing this in both sides of society. Adults who now will not work for a company that will not allow them to work from home because it allows for more personal space. I think sometimes in public school, we look too narrow at us and just our problem. But when you look at society as a whole, that number is probably far larger in society as a whole than it is just in ours. So I'm not making that, but I mean, it is, like, look at where our jump starts, right after COVID, you know? So it's a societal change as a whole, and we're going to have to ride those waves along with it.
An opportunity for us too, because if people are now, like with the Naturally Better Campaign, going to be able to work from home, i.e. their cabin that's up here, that's a potential opportunity for growth.
We actually have some families that have moved into our district that still work for companies in whole other states because our housing is cheap. We have some that have moved from the West Coast, we have some that have moved from the South. And these were young families who looked around their area, could not find homes in their price range, and they were able to move here and keep their jobs in these other states and bring their families. We have at least two or three of them right now, they have some kids in my kids' grades. And I've talked to their parents, and they still work for the companies, like, from these other states, but were able to buy homes that were affordable to them and their family and finally be able to move forward with that next stage of their life. So that's something we have going for us too.
Oh, we still battle the school for replacement with a lot of those. We battle the school thing, the campus with the replacement of those. I just hear it all the time when they go to look at, that's what it is. And then what, you know, as we look at our, at our campus, and you know, Brian and I, like I say, we talk, I think I talked with everybody. This school needs to mirror this town, this community in everything that it offers. And if we can come somehow figure out how to do that with matching industry. We got healthcare, we have hospitality, we have ample trades, we have automotive, we have engineering. We have everything that there is that, that we have here, manufacturing, we could, we, yeah. And you look at the districts, I know my grandson's going to end up in a district that's basically all encompassing of everything. And when I, when I hear about that, I go, holy smokes. I mean, they're building ice castles and fish houses in these Twin Cities places, you, places you don't think that are building HVAC units right in their high schools now, it's happening and all that stuff. And I'm not saying that's the only thing, but they're offering a real excellent pre-engineering and all that stuff. And that's, and you got to look at where the trends are in the, in the world and the communities and how it's going. And, you know, high tech is big with just everything that goes in there, everything, you know, your family's business, everything is moving. And we're, we're sitting here going, holy smokes, you know, it's, it's, what do we have here for that? You know, and, you know, our neighboring community schools are the same way. They struggle with the same thing. Crosby loses, we see that with that, you know? So.
Don, the National Center for Education Statistics says that three point four percent of Minnesota students are homeschooled in 2022. They don't have any data or more research on that. But they say that there's about thirty-two thousand students in Minnesota. Texas has the highest homeschool students, with three hundred and fourteen thousand. And then California, Florida, Ohio, and North Carolina are the other top ones, and the next state. If you want to look on there, the National Center for Education Statistics shows you kind of percentages of homeschool by state.
So as we look at building, then we're declining, we're declining and wanting to build.
Well, I think the concept that is that you want to make sure that your facilities are right-sized.
Yeah, we can afford.
We don't need to build the Taj Mahal if we know that the facilities are declining, but we also don't need to have a bunch of empty space and utilities that we're wasting every single month, right? Because we might be too large. So I think the key in our facilities is trying to understand what we need to, to have, the resources that we have.
But if we build to this day and age, we will increase.
Well, we can hope that, but we should budget for if we don't.
But nobody, it's hard to, well, there are.
Budget our maintenance budget around if we don't.
There's districts that have done it, that they, that there are projections that possibly could work. But, you know, you look at the Rock ridges of the world, but they're farther north. They, they're, they're probably in a little bit of an island from where their location is relative to us. But other districts that are, I mean, this is, it's a pretty, the location of this community is pretty powerful, if you really think about it, in terms of population base, in terms of things like that. So, yeah, if we don't do anything, we can expect that. If we do something, we can expect this, but I don't know how much that is. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you, I mean, that's not something that I project in my business, so something like that, I, I don't know. But I have others do that. I think Mora, Mora would be a good district to look at, what's happening there now that they've totally moved into their new facilities. I mean, it was, it's been a long process, they've been working at that for twenty years.
Yeah, would be interesting to see what their projections were from ten years ago and then now.
Yeah, I know they're pulling, I've heard anecdotal evidence from people I know that kids go there and said there's quite, quite a few, they're pulling kids from every direction into Mora.
Now, I guess probably too soon for them to know where it's going to bubble out at.
Yeah.
Is it open the second year or is it first year?
Well, like the high school, high school's brand new, yeah, first year. And, you know, this may not be a popular statement that I'm going to make, but, you know, we, we probably, somebody should, we should have some conversation with our neighbors to the west because in a combination type of a situation of districts, Aiken and Crosby, Ironton is one powerful brand and one powerful thing. I just see it as something that could be extremely, well, again, it's probably not a popular, probably not a popular statement, but I'm, that's just my mind that goes, and my big picture mind that I, that I look at things sometimes, of the whole scope of things, as what you have.
Well, it also wasn't popular for any of those towns in Rock Ridge to want to be together at some point either. So I do see your point, and you have to view all of your options because they were, they battled forever. And there's another, which district was that that just asked us to support them when we were down at MSBA? Because they're trying to merge three, it was further north too, it's in our district.
They got an open pit mind between all of them. I sat there and looked at all the communities right now.
I will say this, and this is going to be very unpopular too, but the way that education is delivered today is not the way that education is going to be delivered ten years from now or twenty years from now. There, when you talk to people around the country who are more forward-thinking, what we're doing today is not going to be the case.
So there's a free course on Harvard, firm Harvard University that you can take that's called Envisioning Your Education for Tomorrow Today. And it's taught by the professors at Harvard. I thought maybe in my layup time I might take it, I can't remember how long it is, but it's free, so there's always that also.
Thanks. I don't send my kids to Aiken though because of the facilities or because it's in my town or because what we have to offer them academically. I send my kids to Aiken because I know that the staff, all of them, love my kids and take care of my kids. And they're excellent educators. And I don't want to lose sight of numbers and programs when you can have all of those wonderful things, but if the people within the building aren't happy and exceptional and the kids don't enjoy going to school, then you're not going to have anybody there, including teachers and staff. So I think a lot of that, just I don't want to get lost in. We can offer all of this and lose sight of, it's really the people filling the buildings that are taking care and educating my kids every day that are most important to me.
Kids work harder for a teacher that they have a relationship with, that they think, that they know care about them, they care back. So one hundred percent.
Just like employees and employers, right?
I think that's, that's very well said, and we all, we all know that firsthand as parents here, that, yeah, it's been a great experience.
We sometimes overlook that, then, like, we look at the numbers and that stuff, because we know the connections are there and our staff is awesome, but we don't say it enough, we need to say it more.
It's the, it's the people that are, you know, working out of their cab.
It's the, it's the people that are, you know, working out of their cabin, that have a choice of four school districts that are shopping around. They don't have the, it's, you, you can't learn about the teachers when you go and look at four different schools. You're, they're gonna really just look at the facilities, and that's where we lose out with the, with the new people. And there's plenty of them around the area that have a wide choice of districts to, to look at, so.
Well, you take our feedback from when we pulled in kids because they had closed Ranger Care. And the feedback we got about the difference in the staff from one building to another, and the connection they felt, and how at home they felt at Rippleside. And I say our facilities are similar, I mean, Crosby's had a chance to improve some of theirs. But it was the staff and the connection that made that family stay, even after Ranger Care, I think, came back for a little bit. We still kept families because they felt more connected to our staff, like, their kids felt more connected.
I have one more question, and I don't expect an answer, not tonight. But I do expect one in the near future. When we look at the trends of declining enrollment, what kind of planning is going to take place, or is taking place, to take all of that declining enrollment into consideration? Because there's lots of stuff that has to change. And the first thing that's gonna change is the budget. And so then how do we align?
The budget and then staffing.
Yeah, how do, how do we align the budget and staffing, and how are we gonna do that? Because that's a reality, and that's gonna start happening fairly quickly, and we better be ready for it. And if we thought the community was screaming because the elementary school art teacher was cut, they haven't seen anything yet. This, this is gonna, it's gonna hurt.
So I think we're going to lose our quorum in about eight minutes, so I'm gonna move us along on the next agenda item here. Okay, old business, um, we're looking at the policy second reading for field trips, homeschooling, school district testing plan and procedures, and naming rates policy. Um, we could either approve all of them, or if you wanna do individual, it doesn't matter to me.
We approve them, approve them all unless somebody wants to pull one out separately.
I would like to pull one out, only because I have a couple of questions about it, not because I don't support it.
Okay, which one?
Uh, the homeschooling.
Okay, we can add that to next month's agenda. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve 610, 614, and 809?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Holly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cassie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes to approve the second reading of those three policies.
Do we just wanna bring 611 back next time?
I think so.
Okay. Don, let's connect, see any questions worth, are, another point? Do you guys mind emailing them to me or?
Okay, next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jen. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Holly, any discussion?
Um, I would like to just bring up that Vicki Sunholm, Andrea Poole, and Jason are on there leaving as our teachers. And that, um, they have all done a wonderful job, and it was sad to see them go.
Kim Myros too.
She was on last month's, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are big losses.
Vicki decided to retire recently. She came same year I came the first time around, so she's been, been here a few years too. And then Jason Marcello, one of our spent teachers, he's got a job down in St. Cloud. He's really sign language in the two high schools in St. Cloud. And MS Poole's making some changes as well, so, yeah, three, three great staff. We wish them well.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, and then the bus purchase?
This is, uh, permission from the, looking for a motion and a second to, we're purchasing a bus every year. This is actually an order one to be delivered the summer of '25. Where the, as you know, or as I've shared in the past, bus purchases are about a year out. So looking for a motion and a second, this, we talked about this at the transportation meeting. Um, looking for a motion and a second, so we can put that order in now to hopefully get our bus in the summer of '25.
Motion by Don, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rollin, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes.
And this with the bus purchase, the first year, as you know, we purchased the first bus for right at $100,000. That's probably years, it's gone up $40,000, so.
Next is the Aiken County opioid settlement grant request.
Yeah, this is a grant that, um, Jim Hendrickson and Kathy Christie, along with Aaron Melz and a few others, uh, who's sure that the county have been working on. The county has opioid settlement dollars, um, that they can spend on, and they, people can ask for grants, or groups can ask for grants. We've written a grant, um, working with the county, and it's to create an implementation program, look at interventions. And we would use it primarily for vaping and tobacco type infractions. Right now, we, we don't have a real, we don't have a great program in place. We do what we can, but this would allow us time to, um, put somebody, give somebody a couple hours a week where they would meet with kids who have been vaping. And, or try to do some diversion, or, um, help kids beat an addiction, or just help kids quit. The board, they presented to the committee that would, it's gonna bring it to the county board, I think they bring it later this week. Um, but the grant would be for $26,499. Um, that part of that would pay for training of this person, and a part of it would allow for us to have them a couple hours a week, work with kids who either have been caught vaping, or help provide other, um, curriculum to encourage kids not to. So, sounds like the county board's on, in favor of doing this, but I just wanted to let the school board know. So if you get any calls or have had any calls, what's kind of been an ongoing work in progress.
So do you need a motion?
I think I got a motion and a second to accept it if our support, if the board, if the county board comes through.
I'll move.
Motion by Rollin, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brian to support this, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to support the Aiken County opioid settlement grant request. Okay, are there any board member reports or committee reports that you want shared tonight? Okay, hearing none. Personnel committee meeting was canceled. Policy committee meeting?
Yeah, there's the list of policies up for the first reading, and we're working our way up and through. We're in the 700s. There's two 500 policies in there, or just changes, three 500 policy, I think. There are just changes that came from MSBA that, um, more technical or things that just have to be approved, so.
All right, so first reading.
Yep.
Um, the next thing is the A committee meeting.
Brian, did you wanna report?
I'll just give a brief report, there's, uh, so many wonderful things going on there that, uh, it would take a very long time to cover all of it, but, um, making a lot of improvements in the shop area. They developed a lot of additional space, and, uh, that's working out really good. Rocco reported, working on, it was very interesting, working on large projects in the shop. The students have found really enjoyable versus working on like small, small little personal projects. They, they like the team approach to take on, say, like the food truck project they're working on. That was very interesting. Rocco's going to be attending multiple, numerous training sessions in June to advance his education and bring that back to the school. Working on training and implementation of Fusion 360, which will run its operating system for all the tech, tech machines. Like the TORMAC and router, CNC router, that type of thing. So it's one common language, so they're working on staff development for that. Which will be needed for the future robotics program, that type of thing. And, uh, he's got a number, he's got a number of students in seventh grade coming into FFA. So keeping that robust, which is excellent. He's made, made some changes with the curriculum, he's adjusted some classes and, um, but to better fit the seasons into the year or two. So a lot of awesome stuff going on there. As I always say, there's some for every student in the AIG Mac area, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dawkin?
Yeah, um, a lot going on, it's made it crazy. Students last week celebrated Catch the Wave celebration, so our PPS committee at the beginning of the year talked about. We have a chain, if you go come into Rippleside, there's a paper chain that student council's been helping assemble and put up. Um, but for all the Catch Waves, each, um, each Catch Wave, it's written, or students gets the addables to the chain. And we set a goal at the beginning of the year, if we make it all the way around the school, um, students would get a 30-minute, um, kind of free, free recess time and an ice cream treat. And so we did that last week, we achieved our goal, um, so pretty cool, students are excited about that. Our student council paid groceries at Palvex a few weeks ago, I think they raised like $1,000 or $1,100, so it was pretty cool. Um, all grades have been going, going on field trips, um, state parks, movie theater coming up, zoo, the depot. Um, we have our PPS rally coming up next Wednesday on the 29th. Um, we had our LockCon, I think they raised $17,500, I think, is what the LockCon raised. Um, so they get the duck meeting, the duck thing next week.
Nice, nice.
Um, been starting exit meetings with staff, so meeting with all of our professional staff before the end of the year. Um, and just talking, you know, what are your strengths from this year? What are some things that you could build on and move forward into next year? And then how I can support them better as a leader, um, moving into our school year next year. And then this week on Wednesday and Thursday, um, we have our last data meetings, grade level data meetings. Um, so that's where our title, team meets with each grade level individually, talks about data, um, where we've improved, um, and what we can do moving into next year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mars?
Like Andy said, there has been so much going on. We had prom last night, and, not last night, Saturday night. That was great, there was a lot of kids that had, um, planned at workers', and so they put on a fantastic meal. The kids had a really good time, Mr. Hendrickson, um, provided some trivia, he seems to be really good at that. And then, um, there, there were some really fun questions about the staff, so, um, and then other things. So it was really fun, and, you know, there was lots of tiebreakers, so they had to keep going. Um, 12th grade English class, um, did, um, interviewing with Riverwood. Some Riverwood, um, volunteers came over and helped kids practice interviewing so that they're ready to do jobs. Um, Lila Miller and Peyton Marine, um, got Minnesota Allstate choir for 2425, so that is a huge honor for them. Um, they did great, graduation of course is coming up next week, 7 o'clock, um, at the Veterans Field unless we have bad weather, I hope not. The Minnesota Credit Union put, helped us put on Mad Money simulation, which was really cool to see. We had lots of different community volunteers come in, set up tables. Kids got a script of who they were, who they're married to, how much money they make a year, who their kids are, and the kids' names. And so it was really fun to see all of that, and then they had to go around to each table, buy their home or their apartment, and figure out how they're spending their money, um, how they're gonna furnish their home. So they went to another table, and they picked out their furnishings, and then they went to another table to pick out their food they were gonna buy for the month. And so then they had to figure out how much they make and what their expenses were, and then they had to figure out what they were gonna get rid of. Because they couldn't do the Hawaii trip, because they spent too much money out of their budget, or they could go and invest it. So it was, it was just really good experience for the juniors and seniors to do that.
I think they really, I think they really did enjoy that. I think the student that talked with me about it said they had a big trip planned, and then, oh, they had a, something with their tooth, and so it was a $300 dental bill, and so it was real, real life stuff, right?
Their teeth were walking around with bills.
Yes.
Or, um, birthday money or something like that, so you would just kind of find somebody, go, oh, here you go, here's a bill for you. And they're like, God, $100 on me, you know, so then they had to rethink their budget and stuff, because things happen, and.
Yeah, they really enjoyed that.
It was really fun. It was really fun. Um, the peer leaders attended the annual team building, um, character course challenge in Park Rapids, and they had a really good time. Um, doing the high ropes, ninth grade went on their, um, field trip around town last week. They went to Rialto, played some bowling, had some pizza at the city park. And, um, thank you to Danacom Computers and Networks for donating money, so the students could eat pizza from Rosalini's, they provided the pizza. It was good. Public Health provided 114 vaccinations to 85 individuals. 41 students and 39 staff received flu shots, 24 staff received COVID-19 vaccinations. So, um, thank you to Public Health for always partnering with us and, um, kind of connecting, um, the dental services with us. College Geography class went to Palvex today to apply geographic concepts from their class to their lives. They searched the stores to find different labels from different places and see how we're connected to other parts of the world.
I heard the farthest was the, I think, salmon from chili, something, or tilapia or something like that. Yeah, so they were looking at products and where they come from.
They had a really good time, they identified over 35 countries in the store, so that was really fun for them. Community cleanup day was May 8th, um, kids worked at different places, um, Rippleside, city park, town, parks, private homes, health services. They had a really good time. Laura and Jim really, um, put a lot of work into planning that and doing that. Sorry, Laura, that was on your report. Um, we have a blood drive in April, senior awards banquet was held on May 1st. We, um, between dollars for scholars and other scholarships, it was over $180,000 that our students took home. Friday was the choir concert, Aiken Friends of the Arts donated treats for the students and gave them free memberships. All students who were awarded, um, in choir, won a plate, and they're gonna do that again tonight for band. And then the International Club is going to Costa Rica in June on the 10th through the 19th, and then I think we're done.
I got two more things to add too, sorry. Uh, there's six for graduation coming up this Friday, and then.
Do you need board members? Anyone available? I am interested in available if you want me.
What time is it?
And then we also, last Friday, um, for students in grades three through six that have the most growth on their MCA scores, we did a picnic. We've done, it's our third year doing it now, down to the top over, but, um, I drilled a forum, and we had lunch at the park, and they were there for about an hour and a half and had a blast, so we served about 50 kids. There were about 60 kids there, but some kids were out, um, that day. So we had like 50, 55 kids that we had lunch in the park for, it'd be awesome.
And I think that there is, um, the elementary student council, um, like an awards program right after school on Tuesday, May 28th, in the city park. And we were all invited to that today too, that was mentioned today when we were doing our social with the staff. Okay? Laura?
Um, there's a lot going on, but I'll just highlight two things right now. We had our youth philanthropy met today, we didn't have any grants to review. Um, but overall, they've awarded nine grants this year for a total of $11,475. Um, we're graduating two seniors from the group, but this, um, but so far, all of the kids have expressed that they want to be part of the program again next year. They've really enjoyed it. Um, this year we decided to elect, um, have board elections, and so we have a chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary for next year. Uh, and so they'll be more self-sustaining and running their own meetings, which is kind of fun, they're really taking the reins. And then Wednesday, um, noon to two at the Legion is the Grand Friends End of Year party. So if you have nothing going on, and you wanna come have some lunch and watch some fun Grand Friend party going on, we can. There's some other things I can talk about, but we're good.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report?
All right. Enrollment stayed the same this month from last month, a 9:59, nothing really to add there. Little up.
Little update on the listening sessions. We have, we've had 10 sessions already. We have four more scheduled tomorrow. We're going to do one at noon, a virtual session, one at 2:30, 2:15, 2:30 with, at the end of the Grand Friends celebration. And then have, ask them to stay and participate. We'll do one at 5 o'clock at the hospital for the hospital employees. And then we'll do a 7 o'clock session open here for anybody in the community on, and these are all on Wednesday. So that'll put us at 14 and then I'll meet with the guys and see where we're at with numbers and see about, if we want to try and do any more in June. I have a couple more emails out, been in group contact with a couple of different groups, seeing if they'd want to have their own session. So as those come forward, we'll add them. But so far I think it's been good in the listening sessions, good feedback both from the ICS guys leading it and from people who have sat through them. They feel like they've been good processed so far, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate the community and all of the different stakeholders helping us to advance our strategic plan and move forward in those next steps, so.
Yeah, and it's been, like I said, been getting good feedback and for the most part people are wanting to, wanting to participate, so.
I think Rollin wants you to air the Timberwolves game on the Wednesday night one at 7, right?
If you put it on the big screen, maybe we'd get more people. Promise them if they put their Post-it notes up, they can watch it auditorium.
I didn't realize that, no, until you said that.
It just happened last night.
Senior graduation on Friday the 31st at 7 o'clock. Will all the board members plan on being there again?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, I appreciate that. I think it looks good when we're, we're all there. I'll connect with Dawn and Jen and make sure they're aware and know.
Will you be doing the 20 minutes on the score clock again after graduation? So there's 20 minutes of a countdown to do photos before the parade? Is that the plan? Okay.
Yeah, we're hoping we're outside.
We will be. We're going to be. Think positive.
It's gonna happen. It's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah.
Good, good. I make that positive thinking. Well, I think if you've been following the state legislature, there, there is some pre-K funding that's been set aside. They're going to add 5,200 spots to our all-day pre-K. We're in the mix possibly to get some of those, but trying to decide how to register for next year. So I had Laura put out, you know, options for all day. We're kind of going on the date. We, there's interest potentially to have a preschool, three-year-old, half-day session. And I'm asking from the board to support that if we have the numbers for it. Trying to figure out the expense for this is difficult when we don't know if we're going to get added positions from the state. But there is a, there is a increase coming that'll be divvying up. There's a, I don't know, the state's got a list. How we got on there, where we're at on there, we're not in the bottom, but we're not at the top either. We're better than halfway down the list is what I've been told. So we could get a few added seats, which would help fund this. We.
What we're looking at right now, sorry.
Go ahead.
We, we did, we did a lottery. We opened up registration for preschool. Kids don't know yet what their class is going to be and what, what, how many days a week. But we, the two sections of three-year-old preschool that we put out are already full. And if we take all of the kids, we still have a waitlist. So what we're looking at is do we add a third section of preschool if the numbers support it? I think that's what I kind of asked Dan, so.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion, a second to allow us to add a three-year-old, half-day.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Holly to support that. Is there a second? Second by Cassie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry with all members present voting yes.
Okay, June board, I know I'm at the end of my list, but I'll, June board meeting, we're scheduled to be in Malmo. Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
So that'll be June 17th in Malmo.
Snowmobile Club or whatever.
I will not be present. It's because it's in Malmo?
No.
That's closer to home, isn't it?
I, I think I might have two trials going on that week, but I'll let you know. Closer. And then I would note that it's May 31st is the graduation ceremony here and not May 30th, which is on our agenda.
I was just looking at that, I'm like.
Yeah, I was wondering, when is it? It's Friday the 31st, right? I'm like, it's graduation is Thursday? Oh, no.
No, it's Friday.
I thought I had it down on the 30th.
Oh, shoot. Okay.
Okay, which is all right.
All right, anything else?
Booth at the county fair, do we want to have one?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
Okay. I'm just a real update, MDE visit. That was a fun day to be here, listen to our staff talk and brag about some of the things. It was even better when students got a chance to talk to them and share what they did. The unfortunate thing is, is I was told we had exactly an hour with them. So I planned it all to be in the high school and it turns out they're here over two and a half hours. I wish we could have got them across town over to the elementary, but they said they'll come back. And if they do, the next time we come back, we'll, we'll take them over to the elementary because it was, they kind of got shorted on being able to brag and tell MDE what they're doing. But it was a good visit.
Yeah, it was good to visit with them, yeah.
And then, last days with staff is the 31st. We have donuts and so on at 7:30 in the morning. Board, you're invited to come in, just a short little gathering with everybody and they're on their way to finish up and wrap up for the year. And one last thing, Dollars for Scholars and the scholarship night. Dollars for Scholars gave away $69,995. All the other scholarships were awarded that night were $113,693. So our senior classes at the scholarship night were given $183,686 in scholarship funds. So that's a, that's a pretty impressive number. So hats off and thanks to the Dollars for Scholars committees, but also all the other supporters of, of the scholarships and everything, so.
Yeah, that really is amazing.
Yes.
It's amazing for a town this size, the generosity. It's fantastic, so.
All right, anything else?
I think I ran through everything.
Let's see, I had on here, snow cones at Rippleside on the 30th.
Yeah, PTO is doing that. She asked for volunteers. I had volunteered originally, but I also volunteered for the Lions picnic. And now that I'm laid up, my husband is coming in my place. So he'll be there doing snow cones, serving the picnic.
I'm going to try and make it 11 o'clock.
Yeah, it's kind of during lunchtime, so if.
11 to 1.
11 to 1, got it.
On what day?
On the last day of school, on the 30th.
30th.
They do it on the playground.
And that's Lions picnic, do they last?
Lions picnic is that day too. If you want to come, we can always use food carriers because they're getting a little older. Their knees don't always like those wood chips we have. And some of our littles can't hold all their stuff on the way to the tables, so.
Throw in a little bit of wind and it gets.
Yep, and then it just starts, then it's just out of control. Hot dogs flying all over.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Holly. Is there a second? Second by Cassie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With all members voting yes, meeting is adjourned. We almost made it.